Like to call the order, Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, November 5th. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with public participation on agenda items only. Just to be clear, this is for agenda items only. Before us, it is a three-minute cap. We are live-streamed and you'll need to state your name prior to your comments. Anyone for public participation on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move to approval of minutes. We have before us the workshop and legislative meeting minutes as well as the Salary Board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for the workshop and legislative meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Moving to Salary Board meeting minutes for October 15th and October 22nd. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
On Monday, November 3rd, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property, personnel matters, RFPs, board appointments, and county finances.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to Directors and guests. Like to welcome our Director of Veteran Affairs, Tom Carew, to come up and share with us a little bit about Operation Green Light for Veterans. Thanks for being here, Tom.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. So, Operation Green Light shows support to our veterans to let them know that they're seen, appreciated, and supported. This is the third year that Dauphin County has participated at Operation Green Light, also with the National Association of Counties. So what we're asking the citizens of Dauphin County to shine a green light to show your support for veterans from November 4th through November 11th. And if you need a green light bulb, come down to my office. I have some.
Oh, great.
And so far, the Lieutenant Governor's balcony will be lit green from the 10th and the 11th. The City Arisbers Walking Bridge will be lit green from the 10th through the 11th. And I'm working on the Hershey Hospital crescent lights to be turned green between now and the 11th.
That's great. Thank you, Director. Commissioner Hartwick.
I don't know if any single gesture can give enough gratitude for those men and women who have served us, but it's certainly a good start and a public recognition of the dedication and the willingness to give it all in order to sacrifice our freedoms. We saw free and fair elections yesterday. Those things would not happen without those military men and women who sacrificed and have many cases paid the ultimate sacrifice. Not just for the military veterans, but it's also for their families who put up with a significant amount of sacrifice, as well with those who actively serve and who have served in the past. So we have a Veterans Breakfast tomorrow. I know that we are all indebted, both as elected officials and as citizens of this county and great nation, to those individuals. And in order for us to be able to provide that recognition, we'd encourage all the members. Now, the question I have for you, since we're on live TV, how many light bulbs do you have, Tom?
I have ninety-six.
Because it's now advertised and streamed, you may want to go ahead and have the discussion related to additional light bulbs. And if there are additional requests, we certainly want to be prepared to handle those in honor of our military veterans. But thanks for all you've done, continue to do for connecting those veterans with the types of benefits that they have earned. Your office is setting records every year with ensuring that those individuals, both them and family, who have earned veterans' benefits are the recipient of those. And it's not, you know, those things aren't handouts. They are earned benefits. And our job is to assist those families in being able to identify ways to support them and get them the direction and benefits they're entitled to. So, thank you, Tom, for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to start off by thanking those who have served, are serving, and will continue to serve this great nation. Thank you for the great work that you and your team do on our behalf on a daily basis. We have one of the largest veterans populations in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The work that you've done since taking over as the Director has brought us from $200,000 a year in veterans' benefits to well over $10 million. So you're reaching out, you're connecting to the veterans, letting them know that they do have these services that they have earned. A lot of times, they said, "Let the other guy have it" in the past, but now some of them are taking advantage of what they've earned. And you've got to keep getting that message out there. And I want to thank the Lieutenant Governor and Hershey Medical Center, everybody else who's participating in the city. It's a great thing for us to be doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Director Carew, thank you for your leadership on this. Certainly, my father's a veteran and many of my friends from growing up are veterans as well. And so I think any opportunity to honor them, obviously, you know, a green light is one symbol. Certainly hundreds of other ways we can be showing up throughout the year for them. But I think your idea, or what you said at the start of being seen, appreciated, and supported, and this being a symbol of that, I think is really important. So thank you for the work you've done to kind of reach out to entities and to ensure that this is, you know, happening throughout our county. And your partnership with NACO in that as well for, on a national level, to see how this is something that we're trying to continue to bring awareness to and ultimately to show that we do see, appreciate, and support our veterans. So thanks for all you do every day doing that, though, too, not just with this green light project, but the ways we as a county see, appreciate, and support our veterans through ensuring that they get access to benefits that they might not know how to get to or that they might not know exist for them and the families that are supported by that as well. So thanks for all you're doing. Anything else you need from us for this campaign other than just getting the word out?
Just getting the word out. And like I said, if anybody needs a green light bulb, please, you know, come down to the office. We want it up between the 4th through the 11th. Come on in and get one.
Sounds good. Can you bring a box of those tomorrow?
Already have them ready to go to come up tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, Salary Board. Cassie Roschinsky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's no Salary Board packet this week. The Personnel Packet is ready for your approval. There's no revisions.
Do I have a motion for the Personnel Packet?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Just again, these are all positions. If you can just help us understand how this hiring freeze is in fact going to be implemented and the sort of the layers that are going to occur for these future requests in order to, you know, at least let Directors know publicly and us related to the process.
Sure. Thank you. A little over a week ago, the county instituted a hiring freeze for departments under the Commissioner's jurisdiction that do not relate to public safety, prisoner safety, or the administration of free and fair elections. So moving forward, for those departments under the Board's jurisdiction, you will only see personnel transactions that relate to those three specific areas. Although this week and likely next week, you may still see a handful of transactions that were in process at the time we implemented the hiring freeze. For example, there were a few offers that were made and accepted by prospective employees prior to the hiring freeze that had not yet hit the Personnel Packet. And we have intended to honor our word with those offers. So any items that you see in today's packet or next week's packet that do not relate to those three areas I highlighted are here either because they were offers that were made and accepted already before the hiring freeze or come from a different department not under your jurisdiction.
Thank you for that clarification.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
And as I've asked before, just to confirm everything contained herein, it's within the budgeted 2025 numbers.
Yes, according to the departments, yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Budget and Finance Director, Christopher Davis.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Great morning.
Start with just a quick reminder here for anybody watching at home. Our public budget hearings start today at 1:00. And they are also Monday, November 10th, beginning at 9:00, and Thursday, November 13th at 1:00 PM again. I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out this morning. Note, our rates have gone down, and with the recent Fed cut, I'd expect them to drop slightly again here in the next month or two. There is some lag time between that happening and us starting to see it. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet that is ready for you.
Okay. Do you have a motion for the purchase order packet?
Could I ask a question before we take a question, please? This is also for some level of clarification. I know that we are considering lines of credit. I know you're going to be talking about that later. You know, do you want to use this as an opportunity under the budget discussion habit? Or would the Chair prefer to wait till the later discussion?
Do that now if...
I just figured under the budget direction, we should probably talk about all of those issues.
Mr. Haggerty, are you prepared for that?
Sure. Yeah, I can talk about that. We have been, like, I guess, to take a step back. We discussed last week that we anticipate in the next few weeks running out of the rest of our reserves of state and federal funding specifically relating to human services programs. So area agency on aging, drug and alcohol programs, children and youth, mental health, autism developmental programs, and other human service programs, which are, you know, upwards of 90% to 100% in some cases, fully funded by state and federal funds, which we are no longer receiving. We will run out of our reserves. So we will unfortunately, in some cases, have already halted payments to service providers if certain lines of funding have expired. If not, we will have to do so in the next few weeks. On top of that, we have been working to ensure that we do not have to furlough any of the more than 250 human service employees here in Dauphin County that work for us by working with M&amp;T Bank, who is our depository, to secure lines of credit that we can draw down. The technical term is going to be a revenue anticipatory note, which will be essentially a loan we take out backed by anticipated state and federal funds that we will receive once the state budget impasse and the federal government shutdown both end. So I anticipate having term sheets for your consideration next week, at which point, if you approve, we will then close on the two loans, which would help us for the remainder of 2025 and also for early 2026, again, to make sure that we're able to continue to make payroll for those 257 employees.
There's obviously significant concern. If you prefer, I've got comments related to the fiscal issues. I'm sorry. I keep sitting back and I see Ms. Parsons going, "Move forward," usually. On the impact of federal and state budget crisis on Dauphin County Human Services, and due to the ongoing federal and state budget impasse, Dauphin County will not be able to pay contracted providers. As you just heard, I've been getting called by providers now to ask, "When is the county going to pay?" And I believe it's really critical that we mobilize and get engaged. This is now not only just a fiscal crisis, it's a human crisis. Our line of credit will only allow us to cover the salaries of county staff who continue to serve our most vulnerable residents. Real people are now being hurt. A broken system has gone bankrupt, leaving local partners without resources and families without critical care. Many of our small community-based human service agencies, they are without sufficient resources or lines of credit. They form the backbone of this already broken safety net, are now at risk of closing the doors. To the agencies they continue to serve despite not being paid, despite having no significant line of credit and putting themselves in financial jeopardy to care for others, I want to say thank you. Your commitment, compassion, and courage embody the very best of public service. It is unconscionable that we've reached a point where serving those children, seniors, and people in crisis are being forced to choose between fiscal survival and human decency. How many more people must suffer? How many small organizations must go under? How many lives must be at risk before those at higher levels of government act? To our county employees and community partners, I see your sacrifice. I share your frustrations, and I stand with you as we continue to fight for the people who need us the most, often with extraordinarily limited and now in many cases, no resources at all. I know this Board's going to continue to do everything within our power to keep services alive until the crisis is resolved, but sometimes that's our biggest Achilles' heel. We care so much to be able to make sure that there's not a crisis, death, and concerns that we keep getting ignored by the state legislature. What's it going to take? How many people are going to have to lose their lives? How many children are going to have to get abused? How many seniors will lose their life because of a lack of service until we get this budget done? Real people are at risk. The county tax fares are on the hook. This line of credit will not include interest and repayment. It never has. It's time for us to act. The time has come to do their job. I don't know how you plan to get it done, but it's time to get it done. Thanks.
I echo all of those sentiments.
Commissioner Priest, I saw you. Commissioner Hartwick, I mean, you've been here for twenty-some years, the longest-serving Commissioner in the history of Dauphin County. I've often said, I think we both know that in the past, when the Governor's staff and the Senator's staff and the House of Representatives staffs weren't getting paid during budget shutdowns, those budgets got done a lot quicker. They're all still getting paid. There's really no incentive, other than people complaining and us complaining, elected officials. So residents, contact your State House members, your State Senators, and the Governor's Office and tell them to get back to work.
Definitely. With that, are we good to...
Yes, sir.
No, no, I'm... I think we are... Let me just say this. I think it's incredibly frustrating that we're about to have to take a line of... We're left with two bad decisions here. One decision is to furlough 257 employees, to not pay these employees and the critical services that they provide. The other is to take out loans that we're going to have to pay interest on. The state's not going to reimburse us this interest. We've already lost money on interest because of what we're paying. We're using savings right now to pay for services that would be reimbursed. I think we're in, we were over $300,000, maybe even $400,000 last time we talked, right, Mr. Davis? So like, I mean, that's money in interest that's lost that would have gone to offset the budget, or at least we would have had in our savings. And now we're left with, as this impasse continues, the decision of drawing down more lines of credit that are ultimately just going to leave us with more debt that we have to carry. And by "we," I mean, property taxes are going to have to cover that. And it's just incredibly frustrating. And I think all three of us are unified in our frustration and our resolute in our desire that everybody gets locked in a room and figures this out because it is hurting people. And it's going, and other counties are unfortunately in the same exact position. And it's just really disappointing. So I join my colleagues in that, with that. We have a purchase order packet before us. Do I have a motion for the purchase order packet?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion, opposed? Motion carries. Any other questions for Mr. Davis?
A lot.
Yeah, we're going to be seeing a lot of you over the next little bit. Can you remind everybody one more time what the... I know we have a hearing today at 1:00. So budget hearings today, starting at 1:00. And then what were the other two dates for the public?
Monday, November 10th, starting at 9:00. Thursday, November 13th, starting at 1:00. For anyone who's interested, the schedule is on the Dauphin County website, dauphencounty.gov/budget. It's posted there. It's also on our Facebook page, and the meetings will be live-streamed there as well.
Thank you for all the work you and your offices are doing preparing for these budget hearings. Appreciate it. All right, next up, Chief Clerk's Report. Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are several items on today's agenda for your consideration. We have one courts-legal services agreement, one prison agreement, eight repository bids, four tax refunds or forgiveness items, two affordable housing trust fund requests, one agreement for snow removal services at MDJ offices, one solid waste and recycling agreement, one agreement to transfer existing legal services following an attorney who moved to a different firm, a switch to Hartford Insurance for disability, life, and accidental death insurance, which will save the county nearly $200,000 over the next three years compared to our current plan, two satisfaction pieces, one Parks and Recreation Agreement, three mental health, autism, and developmental program agreements, two adoption assistance agreements, two children and youth agreements, one drug and alcohol programs agreement, one human services contract termination, and one human services agreement. The Nice Systems Software Services Contract remains in former business. Two additional things. I'd like to take a moment and thank all the staff and volunteers who, once again, as they always do, work to ensure that we have free and fair elections here in Dauphin County. Despite historically high turnout for municipal elections yesterday, the day was relatively smooth and results were published before the end of the night. So great job to everyone involved, and thank you. Additionally, I'm excited to announce that we are once again opening up an application period for Dauphin County residents to apply to serve on a variety of boards relating to county government starting here in the new year. We anticipate filling as many as 45 vacancies on boards such as the Affordable Housing Board, Council on Aging, Children and Youth Advisory Board, Planning Commission, and many more. Anyone interested in serving on any of our 23 boards and commissions can apply to do so by visiting dauphencounty.gov/BoardAppointments. Again, that's dauphencounty.gov/BoardAppointments. Folks will have until Friday, December 5th, to submit their application in order to be considered at the start of the new year. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to Solicitor's Report. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring Board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
For the item tabled, is there any update on that? Or does your office need more time? Are we requesting a table?
My office needs some additional time, and I believe the Board is also considering the budget hearings that are forthcoming.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. I think we have items 1 through 34 for action for us. Do I have a motion for items 1 through 34?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Just a quick bit of discussion. I'm grateful to the Board for our action on item 20. I'm grateful to the board for our action on item twenty. I know it may be a different company, but this was examined last year related to a company that the county has employed for quite some time that had not provided competitive rates. And taking advantage of these rates are critically important as we take a look for every area of savings. So I'm appreciative we are finally putting this to the savings column.
I echo that and as well, I want to draw attention to item number two, the three forty B program for Dauphin County Prison. And this is going to, you know, hopefully be a cost savings measure for pharmaceutical drugs at the jail. And it looks pretty promising. Obviously, we're, they're all estimates right now, but it looks like it could be a pretty significant cost savings as we move into our relationship with our new medical provider. Anything else? Hearing nothing, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For former business, I'll entertain a motion to table.
I'll make a motion, both in light of the concerns from the solicitor, but also the budget and the upcoming budget hearings, which can help also determine how we move forward with this particular issue, to table under former, former business item one.
We have a motion to table item one. Do we have a second? I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Any new business? Hearing none, we'll move to Commissioners' Discussion and Actions. Commissioner Hartwick?
Yeah, just two quick things. First of all, I'd like to join, I know we've heard a lot about the election staff. I know we were there till late last night. Just want to thank the coordinated and organized effort that continues to get, you know, even additionally more organized and other, you know, there's always ways to do a look back and make improvements, but I'm grateful to Chris Bachman, staff, and I know the leadership as the Oversight Commissioner Priest for ensuring that, again, as it relates to the results of Dauphin County's elections, regardless of what political spin doctors want to put on it, they are credible, free, fair, and accessible elections that ensure that the outcomes are consistent with what the intent of the voter is. Second of all, I just wanted to clarify something from last week. I know that Penn Live had done a recent editorial and reported on a, an issue related to the miracle communities acquisition of property. And I just wanted to ensure that we have a sort of these statements to correct the record because there was a lot of misinformation in that editorial. First of all, no county tax dollars were used for that acquisition. To the funds in question, were federal dollars designated for housing supports to assist vulnerable residents, not local taxpayer money. The county did not purchase the property. A nonprofit organization made the acquisition, not Dauphin County. The county simply helped facilitate access to federal housing resources consistent with the program guidelines. The purchase price was far below market value. The parcel had been publicly listed for two point five million, two point five million, and an independent appraisal value that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the final sale price was well below that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transparency was always the goal and I know that Commissioner Douglas took over as the lead for the county in February of twenty twenty-five, March of twenty twenty-four, within this project. But I remember having these discussions and it was sort of the direction that we wanted to give to have the city, if it was going to be used for a public purpose, to eminent domain the property and to ensure that those transparency requirements and the actual cost of the, that particular property, which had not been identified, but we talked about any property that they would acquire, be forward and move forward with eminent domain proceedings rather than a negotiation. But ultimately, the group decided to move in a different direction and what was presented to us as a Board of Commissioners was as follows. If there was a legitimate concern that existed, it should have been raised long before it reached our Board of Commissioners for action. The record clearly shows that this initiative was designed to leverage federal resources to expand housing access, not misuse local tax dollars. Rather than the headline, a more accurate one could have read, nonprofit group used federal funds to secure property for homeless housing nearly two million below asking price. As always, I remain committed to transparency, fiscal responsibility, and ensuring every dollar federal or local is used to improve the lives of Dauphin County residents. Thank you.
I just want to add to that, one thing that also wasn't talked about in the article was that we now have a twenty-year, a lot for twenty years locked in at low-income housing. So for twenty years, that is low-income housing. And even just when we think of protecting property for low-income housing, think of how property is escalating every year in cost. This is a really great investment for the future of low-income housing access and, and I mean, even if you would think we overpaid for this lot, which I don't think we did in the grand scheme of things, long-term, having it locked in for low-income uses, we know we need that in this county and we know certainly in the case of the unhoused community. I also don't think it reflected that there are, I think, a hundred and eleven people there now or somewhere over, well, well over a hundred, like ten over a hundred at least. You know, I think the article said dozens. I think, you know, it's important to recognize if the, if those individuals had nowhere to go, we would have them dispersed throughout the city. You know, many of them might find their way into our prison. It's very expensive to house someone in our prison. It's very expensive to house someone singly, meaning just like using eRap money, which this money was, to maybe house somebody for a month or for two months or for three months, which we do sometimes when we have to in these emergency situations. The expenses of that probably would have far exceeded within a year for these a hundred and eleven of people, the purchase and acquisition of the property. And so I just, I just think that's really important information when you get the fuller picture to see that this is going to more than pay for itself probably within, honestly, it probably already has in the sense of the critical nature of what it would have put on our human services amid a state and federal budget crisis where we're already struggling to deploy resources, given, given the nature of that. And so, yeah, just thank you for drawing attention to that because it's certainly something worth noting. Commissioner Priest?
Thank you. I want to first of all, start off by thanking Chris Bachman, it's already been done, and his team at, for the registration elections for, again, putting on an exemplary election for the residents of Dauphin County. A lot of municipal races were out there, statewide races and some county races that took place yesterday. Thank him and the twelve hundred volunteers, the work that they did from before seven AM to eight PM, hours before, hours after. And it went off without a hitch. I know there was one issue at one of the polling places that was shut down for about twenty minutes. And then we had a couple of machines, as always does happen, when you have three hundred and twenty-four machines operating, there are going to be a couple that have a few glitches, but overall, what a wonderful job by Director Spackman and his team. I know all three Commissioners throughout the day stopped out there to check in with them and I want to thank them for the great work that they did again. Also want to thank Earl Harris and Pastor Tunde Oyaloa for their invitation for me to attend the African Chamber Pennsylvania's First Annual Dinner Gala and fundraiser on Saturday. It was wonderful being there with several hundred business members throughout the central Pennsylvania community, so appreciate you having me there and representing the board at that event. Thank you.
Commissioner Priest and I went to the United Way CEO Summit where we heard from Planet Fitness about their business and their model and the ways in which it's growing. That was a really cool summit. I took a tour of Three Mile Island this week, which was, you know, eye-opening to see just ultimately learn some of the, more of the history of that site, but also just, it's so massive when you get out there and you walk through it. And it's also very interesting to see that it's all analog, meaning you walk into the control room and it's like nineteen fifty's technology. It's like, I felt like I was on the set of like Apollo thirteen, you know what I mean? It was very interesting, but it's also very encouraging, given that obviously cyber attacks are a real thing now and you're like, none of this is on the grid. So in that sense, it's, it's, you know, I'm thankful there, but, but it was, it was a good exposure to learn about Three Mile Island and to learn about the restart and all that's going into that and all the steps that are being taken for safety for our region. Also want to recognize that Halloween, at least from what I could tell throughout the county, went off really well without any problems. And I want to thank all the public safety efforts that went into that throughout all the municipalities. I know my kids had a great time and I just think of Halloween as this interesting place where like, we get to love our neighbors. I think it's one of the coolest holidays, like whatever your thoughts are on dressing up and all of that, I just think it's so cool to see kids, like I have a, I have a fifth grader right now who's really tight with all of his friends and so they all go to the same neighborhood together and they all basically run up and down the street. And there's something about the joy of watching a fifth grader with all of his friends dressed up, being maximum goofy and running up to people's houses and, you know, asking them for candy and then like as a parent, giving a nod and a wave to your neighbor. And I don't know, it's just that it was something that made me think about like, this is what community looks like, where we are like coming together with joy and celebration and ultimately seeing the joy from the kids. Want to obviously, as my colleagues have already mentioned, thank Director Spackman and his great team and all the volunteers, all those who worked yesterday to ensure we had a free, fair, and accessible election. I'm very proud of the team we have here in Dauphin County. I think we are, we set a level for professionalism that I'm incredibly proud of and I think my colleagues join me in that, in the sense of just the ways in which we ensure that we have free, fair, and accessible elections. I want to express gratitude to all those who ran. As an elected official myself, I know the time, energy, and effort that that requires and putting yourself out there. So thanks to all who ran and certainly congratulations to all those who were winners last night. And with that, that ends my comments, which you can.
Yeah, just want to also add, I did talk to Director Spackman this morning. He told me that he doesn't have all the numbers in yet, but he's projecting close to a forty percent turnout for yesterday's municipal election, which was probably a record number for an all-year municipal election here in Dauphin County. So folks came out to vote. Again, I echo my colleagues' comments, especially Commissioner Douglas, thanking the individuals who put themselves out there. To the candidates that were successful, congratulations. To those that were not successful, thank you for giving of your time and your efforts and allowing the residents to make a decision yesterday.
I see no correspondence before us. We'll move on to public participation. This is public participation. You'll have a three-minute cap and just a reminder, we are being livestreamed. I have a list of some names before me. I will list who's, who's up and then I will list who's on deck and then once I go through my list, we'll open it to the room. We'll begin with Justin James McShane and Tom Connolly's on deck.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
I wanted to take my three minutes to give out flowers.
Excuse me, can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Justin, I should know that, right? Justin James McShane, I live in Lower Paxton Township here in Dauphin County. I wanted to take my three minutes, now they start, with giving flowers where flowers should be given, and that is to the Dauphin County Registration and Elections Bureau. You folks have mentioned them, but I want to talk about Chris Bachman, of course, Kelly Hostetler, Chelsea True, and all of the people that touched that office. And by touched that office, I mean, there's a hundred and fifty-nine precincts in Dauphin County. Let's think about that for just one second. Think about the biggest party you've ever given in your life. And they put it together one hundred and fifty-nine times for what I count to be eighty-two thousand, seven hundred some odd people showed up to this party. All you have to do is take a look a little bit to our east and see the difficulties they had in Chester County. And also take a look to our south and to our west, the difficulties they've had. Dauphin County hasn't had it. I also want to talk about the judge of elections, the inspectors, and all the people who work on the inside. Because it's like a rock band exploding, okay? There are so many moving parts that are out there. And there's also two unsung heroes, and I have a unique perspective, don't I? And what I mean by that is that I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer, but also I sat in that chair over there as a solicitor. And also, I'm the husband of a candidate that ran. And what, thank you. And what I want to say to that in particular is that's a unique three-part perspective that I don't know if many people have. And what I want to say to that is that there are two other people that deserve praise on that. And that is groups of people, I should say, the Dauphin County Safety and Security Crew, because they take a look at all those ballots and pick them up, secure them without a fumble, without controversy, deliver them safely. And there's going to be nineteen thousand, seven hundred some odd of them across the county. And also their Solicitor's Office. Because I know sitting over there, the things that they had to do behind the scenes in order to make it get done, make it legal, and all the worry that goes into it, because I sat in that chair. So to all of those people, for all that they did, I want to give flowers. I think we all deserve to give them flowers too. So thank you to each and every one of you and also to the eighty-two thousand, seven hundred some odd people that voted. Thank you very much, Dauphin County. We love you.
Mr. McShane. Next up, Tom Connolly. On deck is Gina Vasquez.
Tom Connolly, three forty-five North Harrisburg Street. I'll continue on with the Elections Office. They were pushed in Swatara Township with registrations, with mail ballots. We spread that into other municipalities and they did an incredible job, an absolutely incredible job. Many, many people voted this time that had never voted before in a municipal election. The level of interest was extremely high. The group I worked with had interpreters at multiple polling places to help people that had some language concerns. There was not an issue. We saw a record number since Swatara Township for this cycle. The previous high in an election was twenty-seven hundred and twenty-five. All, I think all of the candidates exceeded that in this election. But I'm coming here with a request. Last week, we heard from the Dauphin County District Attorney that he had wrapped up an investigation that had started in May. He issued some findings. I would like a record of those findings. We heard from Chief Clerk, Chief of Staff, Eric Hagerty, that he had some opinions on what had transpired. After that, I spoke with, I'm just going to say, another agency that oversees it. Had a difference of opinion. Reports still were not filed. That would hamper elections being free and fair in Dauphin County across the playing field, not the day of elections. That was absolutely incredible. I think everybody I associate with is extremely happy with the way the election went yesterday, the number of people, no, no real snafus. We had, we had people show up at the wrong place. They were redirected, corrected. We had people show up that had requested mail ballots, that didn't bring them, that didn't know what they, whether they could get them in on time. All problems resolved throughout the day. Great job by anybody involved in the, in the election and in advance of the election. But we're talking about an issue from, from May. I didn't know it when I spoke here last week, but the Dauphin County Democratic Committee had reviewed the same issue that I was talking about and had issued a statement. Didn't even see that until days later. But if we're not going to follow the same rules from the beginning to the end, we do not have free and fair elections. If people can use the, the financial part of this to hide who is responsible for mailers, and I will say, all the communities that got the attack mailers, including the ones that disparaged people based on the color of their skin and race, like we saw in Swatara Township, ethnicity, we want to know who pays for that stuff and we want to see it. We know some of the packs, but to find out after the election over and over again from the same group of people is not fair. So I'd appreciate Mr. Hagerty's statement and the District Attorney's report. And that'll be the last time, once I get that, I'll move it to the next place and I'll make my complaint. If I'm wrong, I'll come back here and apologize, but I think it needs to be looked at. Other than that, great, great job and the three of you served as the election board. So great job yesterday. Credit to everybody. It takes bravery to be on the ballot. So whether you won or lost, I congratulate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Next up, we have Gina Vasquez and on deck is Nassim, and I believe the last name starts with a T, but I'm, I'm struggling to read it out, so. with a T, but I'm, I'm struggling to read it out, so.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Gina.
Gina Vasquez, Susquehanna Township. Yesterday, I volunteered. I volunteered to, to look for numbers, you know, to, to register some numbers, and I was deeply upset and disappointed in reference to the ballots. There were people, Spanish, Spanish-speaking voters that went in and couldn't understand what the ballot said. So when I asked, can they have a ballot in Spanish, one person, one judge told, one election judge told me, everyone in that district knows English. That was her response. The second one told me they'd never seen a Spanish ballot before. They were not given the option to have a Spanish ballot, so which means they didn't know what they were voting for, because they couldn't read it. I think that's injustice, it's unfair. Some of them were their first time voting, and this just discouraged that population once again, once again, not even given a second thought that there would be people that didn't understand English that were voters, just pushed away. Like many times I've come in front of all three of you and have said, stated the same. We have to do better. It's not fair, it's not right. We pay taxes, we're citizens, we're residents, and we deserve the same treatment, whether we speak English, we read English, or read Spanish. We deserve the same amount of respect that everybody else is given, especially when it's their first time coming out to vote. This would just push them away not to vote the next time, just so you know. That's, that's our culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Next up, I have Nassim, and then Louis Butts is on deck. Nassim, sorry, I'm having trouble with your last name here.
Yes, it's Tawdros.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nassim Tawdros. I'm living 6041 Hunterdon Circle, Harrisburg, 1711. I hope you still remember me. I come here from a couple of months ago to do my problem, but today I'm here, I'm not talking about myself, I want to talk about Mike Itaki. Last week, when I seized the sheriff, he took Tom Connolly, I'm sorry, he left, I hope he here, but he just left. Your time off, time off, he gave me hope, I'm right with the right people, right place. Only the one helping me for my situation, it's Mike Itaki. Tom Connolly, he sent the cops after me to my house. He threatened me with the cops, and I tried to get the video from the Sotartownship Federal Office, the video, it's gone, I can't get it. Mike Itaki opened his office. Mike Itaki was in the hospital. I called him, he leaves the hospital, come to me, he come to me every time I talk with him. If you're looking for right people to hold the Sotartownship, the first one, it will be Mike Itaki. If you're looking for the gold people, you have to go to the desert, and you get big machine to dig, and you're looking for the gold, you have to dig very deep, and you, if you have luck or not, you can find the gold or not, but if you're looking for the rock, you will see the rock, it's all over. Again, only one helping me and help a lot of people in Sotartownship, it's just Mike Itaki. He's very honest, very nice guy, for helping everybody if ask him for help, but whatever I can say to him, just from here, I tell him, thank you, because when I saw Tom Connolly, talked about him last week, I get very best. I get very best. Tom Connolly threatened me with the cops, I get, get the video, Mike, he stopped beside me, he give me citation, I can get the township to pay my bill, Mike Itaki take my bill to pay it for me. He, Tom Connolly asking me, no business for you in the township, don't come back here anymore. Mike Itaki opened his office to me. I want to be clear, Mike Itaki, if you lose Mike Itaki from Sotartownship, you lose the township all. Thank you for all of them, thanks for listening to me, and I, I'm again, I'm sorry, I'm not here to make any problem, but it's, I have to say something, whatever you helping me. Thanks.
Thank you, Nassim. Next up, we have Louis Butts, and then we will open it to the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. Louis Butts, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I'm here to say congratulations to all the winners in municipalities, as well as introduce and be a little light. Right now, we do need the, the clock changed again down there on the square, because we moved the clocks back as a little housekeeping, but I want to, I want to focus on tourism. We won the Civil War, and we have over 477 flags from winning the Civil War. I'm going to start a, a State Street Bridge project, improvement project. We have 77 poles, flag with flag, you can put flag cockers on, with, on the lights. We can run a series of five flag, a series of five flags. The flags will never be reduplicated. It's a, it's a, it's a very big story. We can tell how the regiment, their campaign went to win the Civil War with each flag, and it'd be, it's an education piece, and I'll, and I'll begin it. While I was on the road campaigning, a lot of people said, Louis, well, you're so brilliant, you're so da-da-da, you're so, they said, why don't you do it yourself? So I'm going to take that little bit of them saying, why don't you do it yourself? And I'm going to introduce and lobby the state, the county, as well as the city, to improve our State Street Bridge with our Civil War heritage and connect the dots with the Civil War Museum, so that tourists can see how our impact was regards to regiments coming out of Harrisburg, being trained and winning the Civil War. It's an education piece where, where it can be incorporated as a curriculum in the school district, so they can learn a little bit more about themselves and what, bless you.
Thank you.
And what it took to win the war and who did it. I think it's a, I think it would help us, along with the state, to have this identity that is true. So then the story, like you said, and our narrative can be told properly. I, I appreciate you really making sure the lines are straight and correct between Penn Dot and what the truth is. So we've got to get focused more and more on the truth and them being able to tell the truth and know how much it's worth. But I do appreciate, I'm here to introduce a, a project and to make sure they, make sure the clock is right, and, but we have, we have a lot to do to draw attention and tourism to Harrisburg and, and bring those people in and, and bring that revenue. And I'm, I'm really focused on revenue, and I've got the energy to do it myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing the attention of the clock to us again. Last time you did, we got a change, we'll send emails again. Anyone else for public comment?
Commissioner, I'd like to make some comments. Would you like me to make them from here or?
Uh, you can make it from there. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mary Bateman, Upper Paxton Township. I do want to speak as a resident, not in my official capacity. I want to reiterate the thanks to the Elections Office for everything they did. I just want to comment about Mr. Connolly's comments. I had the distinct honor and privilege to serve as a treasurer to one of our judge candidates this fall, and I think there's a misunderstanding amongst people as to how in-kinds work when you report campaign finance. So when somebody gives money, well, does something for you, and it's not monetary, you indicate as an in-kind. So I can give you an example. I receive in-kind letters from the state party. That in-kind letter comes on, just, this is just an example, October 27th. It would have five different dates of five different mailers on there. Some of those mailers could have been September 1st. I didn't receive notice of that in-kind until October 27th. I report on the campaign finance report that that contribution was made on October 27th. So the fact that dates don't line up on different finance reports, isn't somebody trying to deceive people? That's the way that campaign finance works, and I just wanted to try and give light to those who don't understand campaign finance laws. I mean, there's a lot of gray area as well, so I just wanted to give my perspective and, you know, just offer my thanks to what everyone did, you know? It, it is, it was incredible to see everyone come out and vote yesterday, and I just want to thank everybody, and like they said, it is hard, it is hard to put your name out there, and, you know, I hope people continue to do it, and I hope people continue to vote and use their civic duty. So thank you.
Controller Bateman, thank you for bringing some clarity to that. I know I, I sat and looked at it with Mr. Hagerty, and I think, you know, some of that, you can, can, you can infer nefarious, where also it might just be something like what you're saying, which is that even the person trying to document doesn't have information in front of them until it's provided, and I think that's, that's the challenge here. And then, then you have the reality that Pennsylvania has some of the grayest laws around campaign finance, reporting and all kinds of things, and so that creates other layers, but, um, but I do, I do think that's worth the public growing in awareness of, and, and, and there's ways we can remedy that, there's ways we can create tighter boundaries, but that has to be done at the state level.
And especially in-kind, because if somebody doesn't tell you, what, how do you report something that you don't know?
Yep, exactly. Thank you, Controller Bateman. I believe Pamela's on her way up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Hagerty. Pamela Parson, City of Harrisburg. I appreciate it, Commissioner Hartwick, that you caught yourself, that you were leaning back and people couldn't hear, and I got a couple of thumbs up from folks who texted me during the meeting, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the people who came out and voted yesterday, because the positions like judges, MDJs, our controllers, these are the people that are most important to me. These are the most important elections, because these are the people who are going to have the largest effect on your everyday life. And with that, I'm thinking about, I heard Mr. Butts say a few things about truth. There was a lot of conversation this morning about finances and transparency, and I'm going to jump into that mix a little bit, especially because the door was open. When the Commissioners, when you as a county allocate federal money, that might not be our county taxpayer money, but it's still our money, and you still have a fiduciary responsibility in that. So how you allocate that and to who is still important. And I'm thinking about the $750 that went to A Miracle for Sure, and I know there are some complicated ways in which, and things that that money can be used for, I understand that, but I also like to think about what if the majority of that money went to them rather than to a property owner, and what they could possibly have done and would be able to do if they had that money? Yes, what that, the, the final payment on that property, yes, was less than the appraisal, but it is still just an appraisal. You still have to look at, how long was it on the market and who's going to buy it? Because it's still an appraisal. There are some serious issues with that property. Flooding issues, heavy metals, which has never been talked about, because that was old Phoenix property, zoning, which I still haven't heard if it's been, the zoning's been changed, and there's railroad tracks there. Why do I mention those things? Because that makes it, at this point in time, very inappropriate for housing in the long term. And I am sorry, but I still need convince about how this is really going to make a difference in affordable housing and with our homeless population. They're in a place where we can't see unhoused people now, but they are still there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parson. Anyone else for public comment?
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ralph Rodriguez, Harrisburg. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate your hard work and dedication to our county in these times of hardship. I come to you today as the president of an organization that is a drug and alcohol provider for Dauphin County. All You Can Inc. is a staple organization in this county that conducts amazing work in the prevention intervention realm for our youth and families. I understand due to both the state budget not being passed and the current government shutdown, the future looks brim for the county. I also understand many future complications to come will be out of your control, but what am I referencing today is as a provider for the county, we have invoices since September that have not been paid or addressed in the drug and alcohol realm. No correspondence from the ju, uh, the department's administrators, no email or phone call returns. My organization has been reaching out to department heads for weeks with no response, and I actually, was that right? Although that answer is relative, what we do know now is that all providers' payments will be held due to the lack of funding. I heard that in last week's session, that November's invoices and forward will be withheld, but we were totally in the dark about past invoices. We run a grassroots organization, and our overhead and payroll have consumed us completely, and we're afraid of the future of our services, quite frankly. We're not upset, and these statements come with no malice, but what about our families? Not just the staff and their ability to pay their bills and rent, but what about the families we serve that depend on our services? I'm here to state on the record that All You Can Inc. is a trusted organization in this community and will continue footing the bill and providing services to ensure our families in Dauphin County receive the highest quality of prevention possible. We are not quitters, we're doers. All we ask for is better and more efficient communication, so small businesses like ours can pivot and make proper adjustments in dire times like this, so we don't have to close the doors ourselves. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to voice our concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, I, I just want to encourage you to talk to Mr. Hagerty after, after the meeting, just because I think, I just want to make sure we're aware of, of communication for communication purposes. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, second by Commissioner Priest. All in favor?
Aye.